This conference will now be recorded.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We'll start with clerk items. Item A is a regular board meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Does anyone have any corrections or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B is Essex County Transportation Agreement.
Janet, did you have a chance to?
No.
It's just the renewal of it.
It's the same one, yeah.
Yes.
So you okay with that?
It's a standard form county agreement, yes.
Shall we make it, pending you having a chance to look at it?
No.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Anyone have any questions?
It's got all the attachments with it.
Okay, so the motion is to approve that I signed the agreement.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so passed. Item C, Approval of Part-Time Police Officer. It's all you're probably aware that's Tom Herzog. Of course, we wished he had never left. But I will entertain.
Well, I'm gonna do a few dates a month.
Yeah.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Tom was getting nervous there, probably. Okay. It's approved. Item D, Electric Department CDL Training Program, Plattsburgh, New York.
I'll make the motion. To send Jared.
No, that's already run by Zach.
Oh, that's...
Noah and Jake.
Okay. All three.
And they're all moving to their A license.
Okay. Make that motion.
Second.
Just one question. I know we had talked before a little bit about doing that and having someone here get qualified and training, but we're just sending some of them now, is that...
Yeah.
Okay.
Brad's gotta figure out what to...
So this is gonna be A, which is the highest.
Yes, and you have to have that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And those guys are going, so all three of them are going to Plattsburgh. Okay.
Okay. Item E, Adirondack Film Form Request.
I'll make the motion to approve $1,000 as a donation.
Did we talk about that? We were gonna...
With, oh, with the letter that says...
This is the last year.
This is the last year.
Apply for leave going forward.
Right. Okay.
Early September.
I second that.
All in favor?
I think you're gonna be grant as well, but I don't think...
Okay. Item F, Approval of Canyon Banners.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And the same thing, item G for CHE.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, Northwood School Rowing Request. Happens every year.
That's just the rowing team wants to be able to use Maryland.
They put a course up. Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And item I, Communication Board and 10 Year Apartment.
So is that they agreed to go...
They decided to change their minds.
Against.
Because I think Tennant...
I think Tannenberry's a good choice.
It's much better than the other two, because the other two weren't...
Ultimately, I think Rotary will sponsor Communication Board.
Right, everyone, right.
So I make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I've got some questions. Who's going to own that? We are. Rotary's cutting us a check, invoice is coming to us, we will own it. Because I know when other entities have donated a kiosk, a board, or something, we make sure that they know we own it. If it falls apart, we can remove it. Okay.
Good.
Because there's already one right at the beach.
The same. Item J, Olympic Car Show Parade, September 3rd.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And anything else come from clerk items?
Nope.
I have some.
Okay.
So we have the renewal of the agreement with the Trilets Humane Society. As you might remember, they provide services for shelter services. We pick up stray animal. This, the last one, expires, expired at the end of fiscal year, so that would have been November 31st. So this is the renewal of that. It's a three-year renewal. There, had this been given to anybody, and it came to me from Anita.
Does it usually go to Chuck? No?
Oh, alright. So it's the same, with the exception of the fees. This year, the fee was $5,500. They're proposing that for fiscal year '23, '24, it'd be $5,600. So, and then $5,700 for fiscal year '24, '25, and $5,800 for the third year. So it goes up $100 each year. Under the existing agreement, payment is due to them in August. They didn't put that in this one, but I would suggest we add it. So I don't know whether you want to act on that tonight or wait. Right now, we would have, we don't have an agreement with them in terms of...
Even though I don't think they would deny us, I do think it's important service. Good, it's gonna say Phil.
Yeah.
My suggestion is, you don't have a problem.
Yeah, I think the only thing that's different in here is the fee structure.
Yeah.
And pricing, dog food's gone up.
Yeah.
Because everything's gone up.
Do you need a motion?
I think a motion to approve it with the one change that we add in there, that the payment will be made in August, that's okay.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Also, we have a maintenance agreement with New York State DOT for the Main Street work or area that was redone this year. This has gone back and forth between Brad, me, Ivan, and George Landry of the New York State DOT. It does outline the respective responsibilities between the village and the highway with regard to the various components that were done. For example, we've got traveling, we've got the street lighting, the parking striping, the upgraded water system, sewer system, the drainage, de-icing things. This also will not impact the agreement that we enter into annually with the DOT for reimbursement for the plowing that we do, the snow removal that we do on that certain designated mileage. So, as I said, this has been worked on for probably three or four months. I don't know whether you would like to see a copy of it. I said it's been vetted by Brad, me, and Ivan for responsibilities, and it pretty much does track our understanding of what we're responsible for versus the understanding of what the state's gonna be responsible for.
And those negotiations went back before we'd started the project, didn't they? I mean, I think when we started the project, we started negotiating on what we would and wouldn't do. So I mean, it's not like this is just negotiated.
No, no. And, you know, we will have a lot of responsibility, for example, which we've always had, the street lighting, the sidewalk pavement, the parking striping and signage, the loading zone striping and signage, parking meters, curbing, guardrails, railings, landscaping. We've always done that. We're responsible for our sanitary sewer system. We're responsible for our water supply system. And also, the drainage system, which would be the catch daisons, the frames, the grates, the covers, the associated piping and infiltration practices. And snow removal and de-icing agents, application for sidewalks.
Board of pleasure, if you feel comfortable, we can go ahead and approve it.
I'd like to read it and understand that I'm gonna make the suggestion we table it.
Okay. Actually, it wasn't on the agenda, so I mean, we have to table it, do it.
Nope.
So, okay.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay. Bring us to Treasury Items, and that's to approve more than a day, but number two.
I'll make the motion.
So I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. And item B is to set a public hearing for the water and sewer rates.
We don't have to have a public hearing for sewer.
Oh, yeah, it's sewer rates.
Yeah, we don't...
You call it water sewer.
We do not need a public hearing for water rates. By law, we have to have a public hearing for sewer rates.
So just strike "water" from that title. It should just be sewer rates, we're not changing water rates.
Okay. So, do we want to set a date?
I know that I had talked 4:45 before the next board meeting. It's possible.
That's the Tuesday after Labor Day, right?
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody?
Sure.
Okay. Now you have to get here early. Do we need a motion on that, or just...
Just set the, set the date.
So then we will set the date for Tuesday, what is that, sorry, the 6th?
The 6th.
4:45 on September 5th. Okay. Anything else to come before Treasury Items?
Nope, none at this time.
Okay. Anything on your new business? Anything on your old business?
Kay, if we were to, we would probably talk about the contact with professional services, which is having to update the comprehensive plan, because I think she's the liaison for that committee, but she could help us, but she's not here.
Okay.
She gave an update during the admin meeting last week about it, this is where they work. I don't know if there's anything for her.
Other than that they pushed back the date for November, because obviously we're almost in September yet.
And state, while state funding hasn't come through yet.
Right.
Yeah, I had some comments on the agreement, but I'll share them with her, I guess.
Okay. Anything else for old business?
I do, I just want to give you an update on where we are with STRs. In January, prior to enacting the new regulations, the village had a total of 266 permits in the village, with 27 hosted and 114 unhosted. And the difference between those two would fall under the lodging classification, which would include your condominium complexes that we let them regulate their own. So currently, or after January 23, we issued, or the planning department issued, two new hosted permits.
Okay.
All right? And now, permits that have not been renewed or canceled due to sales. Three permits, unhosted permits have not been renewed. And two, two permit, well, the three permits haven't been renewed because there were sales of property. Two permits weren't renewed, just because they just weren't renewed. So that's just an update, and of course, we've complaints. Noise, 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 trash, all within the Hillcrest area, most specifically during the lacrosse period. So, just giving you an update, and we're gonna start another, start the committee back up again in September after summer to kind of review the regulations we enacted and see if there's any changes we want to make.
Where did they complain about noise and garbage? And were penalties assessed?
No, because they were, some of them were first time. It was a conversation to the owner, a conversation to the contact person, so no. Currently, though, there is one pending where somebody is operating without a permit. And that was somebody who tried to get in under the wire and asked for a...
Parents.
Yeah, yeah. And so they've been operating, and they've been issued a summons, yes.
What about the one where they obviously talked to someone, it was their first attendance? Does anyone get back to the people and maybe complain somebody, know what happened? Just so they admit we're ignoring it?
No, no.
Is that something we could do?
Sure.
And these are, the other ones.
Right, I didn't get any town numbers, this is just village.
That's all, I want to make sure, because we don't, we don't need, and I know, it'd be nice to have, but we don't need.
Yep.
So we have 266 in the village.
266.
I think it's probably the one I'm looking at, I saw the pictures.
But don't forget, a lot of them are in Pine Hill, and that's...
How do I forget? Yes.
And Beach Hill.
And Beach, well, Pine Hill is the condominium complex it's managing.
But the Beach Hill, we didn't do that, we had a bunch up in Harrison.
Yeah, two.
Two, okay.
And what about a river bend doesn't have any, or anything? Okay. But I, you know, I think we set out to strike a balance between, you know, what was there, and I think we did a good job. It's nice to see we've actually, I mean, the two new hosted people, that's just what we wanted, was someone to be able to live here.
And they're right across the street from me. Or ways.
Oh, they...
The kids moved out and they rented the, they rented the garage apartment.
Well, but at least they'll be on the property.
Right, they are. I mean, absolutely.
I have nothing, it's kind of like, if someone's on the property, it doesn't really bother me as much.
No.
Just today, when I heard the music going on...
That was from Louis's.
No, that was from, there was a church thing going on.
Oh, yeah, there was a party.
And I, and all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, they just sold the house above us, I hope this isn't soon. Because I'm like, I could hear it inside my house, and that's a long way.
Mm-hmm.
I've got, I know, I've got 100 feet of trees that you can't even see through. But they all had a good time.
They had a carnival, they had a Dunkin' Booze.
Oh, they had everything. Yeah, they had basketball, they had bouncy house, and when we went by at 6 o'clock, gone.
Oh, yeah, you can use dollars, anything there. We went by at 5:30.
They cleaned it up and then, we'd go.
I do know, I met a couple of them who moved here from Texas, they work remotely, and they bought a house that was an STR just around the corner from me. They're living here full-time, working remotely.
I forgot to turn off my...
Yes. I should have done that.
So it's great to have someone full-time in the neighborhood?
Yeah, for sure. And did your sugar well?
No, it's just telling me that my Bluetooth, my alarms, I just forgot to shut off my alarm.
Well, like I say, it's nice to see, all right, we're starting in the right direction. How about the pool, is that quiet down?
Oh, that's...
That's the last two months.
Oh, yeah, no, that's...
Oh, yeah, that's fixed.
They had a new one.
Yeah.
Seems like on TV when they stop talking about something like that.
That's the one thing I have to do.
Your first day with a cell phone?
Every day is the first day with a cell phone.
Keeping my sugar under control.
Right.
And I watch now a lot more. And I've had a soda or a chocolate bar ice cream in two weeks, and I need to pass that.
Anything else on your old business? Nothing under mayor items at this point?
I guess I can just say, under the old businesses, we went down for the Lake Placid Stakes.
Oh, yes. It's our picture.
So it was very good. Well, it did, I didn't see the hockey fires, they were somewhere, we were up in a different one. It was nice, you know, it was a good day.
You and your family looked very nice in all the photos.
I mean, and you know, it's funny, because my wife's from there, so that, you know, when you go into the clubhouse, you're supposed to be dressed, and all these people are just shorts and t-shirts and everything, I'm like, this was like, but I guess after the COVID, they just said, okay, that's...
Even up though, in the inside, in the car?
Yeah, that's what I mean, even in the box, that's right where we were.
Yeah.
I'm like, whatever.
Did they do the victory champagne thing down below or not?
They had no champagne, just did the, we stood with the winner.
The trainer and the trainer?
Yep, and the two from the Olympics.
Oh, Mark Johnson and John Harrieton.
And then we sat there, and the owner goes, yeah, I went to Lake George, and we, I hit my lip. And then the other thing at heart is, I am now the supervisor of Lake Placid.
Are you?
Yeah.
Good job. Talk to Derek.
No, not, no, 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 I blame that. I gave him my card too, so they could actually greet it, but just so if somebody asked, I am telling you, I don't want, I can't give you a card. I'm like going, whoa, my kids go, wow, she can do appointments.
Well, thank you very much for saying that.
So that's all I have.
Sounds like we will probably get another invitation next year, due to the fact that you didn't embarrass us. Very good. Trustee reports.
About the only thing that I've got is, they've been having some minor issues with the new water plant, with the new, the four new tanks. First four tanks went very well, I guess the second set of four tanks, they had some on and off issues. It turns out, when they sent, some of the valves are not coated on the inside, so they finally figured that out, and they're being fixed, and that hopefully will clear up the problems. But as usual, we still have the other four tanks, and we do have some redundancy.
I guess I had a meeting last week for the lead recertification, and it sounds like we're gonna do some sort of public input session beginning of September, and they're trying to find a location. They were talking about possibly the beach house. I don't know if they got ahold of Anita or...
They did. It's in the very first week, right?
I think so, yeah.
And we figured, we'll just make that one the condition, if the Adirondack Sports Council leases the beach house, that they use that, you know, say we've already got a commitment, we just kind of put that one in there.
But when the sports council leases the beach house, if they do, they don't get the...
The conference room.
They don't get the conference room.
But I was told they wanted the main room.
What main room? The conference room?
The, the main room, that's what, they needed something big.
The Ackerman room?
No, they... The big room, not the...
Lead, the lead people?
Lead would want the, no, lead would want the boardroom, is what I thought.
I was told they wanted the main room, but either way, if it's just the Ackerman...
They might have talked to lead room, the wrong room.
Could you make sure that...
We had talked about the boardroom.
So what is the board's pleasure in leasing the beach house to the sports council?
You probably saw our requirements, the cost?
I saw...
$2,000.
A month.
Yeah.
They can't change the locks, and they need insurance.
Right.
And the electric has to go in their name.
Parking's not...
Well, how do they pay for parking?
They buy a permit and use the permit spaces.
Okay, so when we tried to do that previously, we were told that that was then a perk for the employees, so that they would have to be taxed on that right to park. That's why we didn't do it before.
Why we didn't charge them for a permit?
And why we couldn't, why we couldn't include parking in the agreement.
We're not including parking.
No, okay.
We're, we're not, they gotta go buy a permit. Because we're only talking about two or three people.
Beach house now.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
And then the other caveat, Janet, we would like in there is that if we want to go in and do any work in advance of if the police department moves there, that we'd be able to get in and do that, provided, you know, it didn't disrupt their daily activities.
So how, what's the term of this lease?
Six months.
At least six months. I mean, who knows? I mean, we aren't sure yet if that's what we're gonna use for in the future.
So...
Well, we will at least give them six months, and then...
How many permit parking spots are in front of the beach house right now?
Eight.
Are we giving them all eight?
No, no, they gotta go get...
They know, but...
Get a permit.
But are they gonna go, let's say they buy eight permits?
No, no, I mean, there's only three employees.
They're gonna buy three permits.
Well, I just want to see if we need...
Spaces there where they come in, they go park in the big parking lot.
No, but I want to know if you wanted to limit the number of permits, so that they aren't taking up all the permits.
But anyone on Main Street can buy a permit, right?
Right, but you know that if they bought, for example, six permits, they're gonna be there every day, because that's where they work. So they would be monopolizing those permit spots to the exclusion of other people.
They need six vehicles for those permits.
Right.
And there's only three of them.
Well, overall... But they've, they've bought permits, and what's the difference between somebody else who bought a permit or...
Well, I think the only difference is you know that they're gonna be there every day, and that's where they work, so that's where they're gonna park first, I don't know.
Eh, I don't think so.
I mean, I don't see how we could, how could we say no, because then all they gotta do is buy a permit and park there. The same people park in the permanent area by my store, and they're all people who work on Main Street.
All right. So we're not limiting the number of them. Have they agreed to these terms?
Well, we brought it to you first. Isn't there a crinkle in that, anyway?
Yes.
What's that?
They may not have employees anymore.
I definitely don't have a head anymore.
Well, at least they don't have the same head. I mean, I think it's, at least for now, it's going to go on. I think that was part of, part why she wanted to establish a place for it, but, you know, we just wanted to have you have a chance first to look at it, see if you had any other ideas or thoughts. If you don't, then we'll make the offer to them and see what they have to say.
What about cleaning? Are we cleaning, and are they cleaning?
They would be responsible for cleaning.
Yeah, I'd say...
Well, I know in previous iterations of this type of agreement, we've, we put in specifically, they clean, who provides toilet paper and all that kind of stuff in the bathrooms that are in the outer door that they use. I'll just look at other ones that we've done.
I think they're responsible for all that.
Except the bathrooms are a public area now.
Yeah.
When you first walk in, yeah. If you, whatever we've done in the past, it's supposed to be a good guideline.
That's all of once we're talking about, is the ones upstairs, because they are public.
Right.
Okay. Okay, anything else? So at this point, then we will open this up to the pressing public comments.
Hello? Hello? I've got a few things. The, I want to bring up the ADA coordinator position. That's been assigned, no, it's been assigned to the clerk, and she's had that now for over five months. I spoke to her about that, and when you assigned that to her, it was meant that, oh, this position's just a gateway, it's just a gatekeeper. Well, ADA coordinator is not that. If anybody wants to look that up, what actually the ADA coordinator does, we need to have a self-assessment, self-evaluation, transition plan, everything that needs to go on to make the village either compliant or knowledgeable about these non-compliant ADA situations. So there needs to be a list of that, that comes in the plan. So I can walk through the village, and, you know, like our bathrooms turn out ADA compliant, the parking lots, there's super grates in the lacrosse wash, there's a whole litany of things that need to be documented. That way, when you go to do those renovations or alterations, that those are addressed at that time to make sure that they're compliant. So that's what that position encompasses. It doesn't, it's not just a person that takes a complaint. And when I went in and spoke to, to the clerk on that, she had no idea what I was even talking[1710.46] And when I went in and spoke to, to the clerk on that, she had no idea what I was even talking about. So number one, I, she's a competent person, clearly, in a position. But she's not qualified to do this new position out of training. So what I would like to know is what type of training is the village going to provide for her? There's plenty of it out there that's going to make her a competent and qualified ADA coordinator.
Well, I think at this point, we've got your word that that's required. We don't know for sure that it is. I would say at this point, we will look into that, whatever it takes to comply and be in compliance, we will.
Well, the training is not compulsory, but if you don't have the knowledge. I, I acquired knowledge because of my business over years of ADA, so pretty well, especially towards a walk, pretty well formed on what's required. And I know we're looking for things and we're looking for the laws, look at the laws. Somebody needs to be competent with this. And you can't just say, well, we got to pass it off to somebody else for an engineer or something.
Like I said, we will, we will look into that and find out what level of competency is required for a village of our size. And we will comply.
Well, it doesn't, you're falling into the 50, so that doesn't matter to you. Whether there's 300 people working here or 3,000 people working here, you're 50. That's it. Qualification.
Like I said, we'll look into that. Okay.
The next thing, and even this meeting, it's not ADA compliant. I'm not using any type of things out there for the hearing impaired. So we need to look at this meetings, there's nothing out there for the hearing impaired.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Um, I've addressed with you, Mr. Mayor, a complaint about the treasure, Mrs. Goodrow. On May 15th, when I came into the building, was up looking for some records from the clerk. And Mrs. Goodrow called the police suddenly. We had four police that were dispatched, two of them were up in the hallway. They were all running into you and your, Mr. Herzog, buddy.
No, I thought you were making a joke of that.
No, that's not.
You said they were running into each other, is that what you said?
No, they were running into the building. I don't think it's funny at all.
I thought you said they were running into each other.
Running into each other, just running up the stairs. In fact, when I was pulling in, I saw Officer Herzog pulling down. He was called and he had to return back. The other thing is that there's no body cam for the gentleman in this. So conveniently, but they didn't get turned down. But that's a whole nother issue that I'll talk to you about and how you comply with body cams, much like the state police policy with body cams. So what I'd like to know.
Our body cams don't get turned on unless there's a problem. That's not your policy.
Yeah, I know that. I know your policy. It took quite some time for me to get it right then. But what the problem is with that is, let's say you run into an active shooter or something like that. Then you're going to wait until you confront the active shooter before you turn on the body cam. So when you look at that type of logic, these things, the state lease, when they get called for service, they turn on the body cams. When they exit the vehicle, the body cam would say, oh, Officer Herzog came here. He was dispatched, he came back, he got out, he got out of his vehicle, came up and they were up there. They were actually waiting in a stairway for me, which is very embarrassing. That could go way, way south.
Yeah.
For doing nothing wrong, I was exercising my constitutional rights and you got the police basically weaponized.
I can't speak to the situation, but I can speak to the fact that this day and age, if anyone of my employees feels any reason to call the police, they're more than welcome. And that's what they did.
And what was the reason? Do you know what the reason?
I have no idea, but if they don't feel comfortable, they're welcome to call the police. Better be on the side of safety.
The clerk told me afterwards, Anita told me, that it was because it was recorded.
I can't answer that, but like I said, at any time, any one of my employees does not feel safe, I feel be on the safe side. We have a police department bring them here. I'm sure they didn't bother you from what I've understood. If their presence here bothered you, I'm sorry.
Their presence doesn't bother me.
Okay.
Being, having them called upon, apologize. So there's no disciplinary action that you're going to do. You think that this was a.
I will refer this to legal counsel.
What's legal counsel?
Start with Janet.
I haven't been involved in this yet, so if you're referring it to me tonight, then so be it.
Yeah.
I, I believe there's been a response or has a better written response to, to the, his.
I was under the impression that you were handling everything of Jim Hughes.
No, I think.
Written response to who?
To you, Mr. Hughes.
No, me.
Okay. There was an email suggesting a written response?
Correct. I don't believe it was sent.
Okay, well, then we'll have to follow up on that.
Okay.
All right. How about an apology? Any of you willing to offer me an apology?
I'm sorry you were uncomfortable with the situation, but I was very uncomfortable with the fact that.
That I was in the building?
No, not that you were in the building. I have an issue with you in particular.
Was I y'all?
No.
For the reason my voice.
I get very worried about my coworkers. And because she was being recorded, I didn't know if there was an avenue we could take to make sure that our side of the conversation was recorded as well. From our perspective, I made a phone call to Chuck. I didn't know if he was going to dispatch anybody to the building, if he was just coming up himself. And if there was an officer there with a body cam in case. We wanted to have it recorded, but it was not in any way to make you feel as if you weren't welcome here. I just, you, you tend to record what we say.
Well, is there, is there anything wrong?
No, absolutely not. But on, on our side, we should be in the same right, correct?
You certainly should. There's cameras all over this building, there's camera right there.
So I am sorry that you were uncomfortable with the situation. I do apologize.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I consider the matter so for that apology. Thank you. But a lot of this, I believe, Mr. Mayor, comes down from you. I mean, I think it's your disposition towards me. When we were on the, on the, on the meeting last fall, you kept saying when I mentioned that you were having a party, you chastised me about having a party, that your event wasn't a party. I got, I'm sure you got the recordings of that. I'll take your order.
You won't take that.
But in the newspaper, they said this was a party and they held it at the right here.
That's fine.
No.
No, I mean, that's fine. Whatever you want. You've got the recording, you've got the pictures. Very nice.
Even the fest who says that.
That's good.
So why should I be compelled in my speech for that? Compelled them?
Honestly, I don't remember the whole incident. You obviously do. You would take the time to record it and take pictures and. I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're upset about.
Well, I guess when we can take that further on, it's just the, how you present me towards the rest of your staff and the rest of your team.
I don't think there's much that I have to represent here. I mean, I think you speak.
Well, how about, how about the last meeting that you had here when you, when you made fun that, at the beginning, before the meeting started, when you made fun that, that, oh, Jim Hughes wanted to have a disciplinary action that's minty.
I don't see any reason that there should be and I don't remember anyone chastising you about that.
Well, you chastised me. I wasn't here, but you made light of it and you thought it was a joke. And the clerk.
Like I said, I think anybody this day and age, any municipal office that feels threatened or wants a policeman here, they're more than welcome to. I don't care who it's for. You or anybody else.
But for no basis.
I think anybody that in themselves feels threatened or feels they want a policeman here, they have that right. I wouldn't deny any one of my employees that.
But it's baseless anyway.
According to you, but obviously it wasn't to the employee. If they feel more comfortable with a policeman here.
Because they did not.
If you, if they feel more comfortable with a policeman here, I'm going to, I'm going to allow that for anybody. Whether it's you or anybody else.
Okay, so we'll consider that closed.
Okay.
The FOIA request that I've been looking for, I've been asking you and I've been asking, I asked the clerk back in, when I, when I came in on the 15th of May, that I wanted to have the information supporting all of these change orders that were, obviously it was change order number eight that I requested. And I requested that of you as well. You keep deferring to legal counsel. And there's nothing in FOIA that says that I have to wait for your legal counsel.
Well, but.
What are your, what are your exceptions?
The fact is.
But you can speak to them.
No, oh, the fact is, can I? That, well, to the best of my knowledge, based on everybody that's an employee of the village of Lake Placid has told you, we have given you what are, what we have in our possession. We do not have the other details that you seem to be looking for. We simply don't have.
But they're your records. They're your records.
Well.
You, you have to be accountable for your records. Now, what I've done is I've already contacted Cabricky and I've checked out the, I need the records. So are you guys going to give me these records that I want to look through or not?
I'm still deferring this to legal counsel.
All right, but you're 30 days.
Well, we're responsible, the way I understand FOIA, to give you what we have. If we don't have them, we don't have the information, we don't have to go get, find it.
But that's incorrect. What I'm looking for is very readily available and it's more than likely in a cloud drive. And it's either your contractors have it, you should have it. If you don't have a copy of it or Brad doesn't have a copy, but what do you, people do.
I don't have a copy of it.
Not you, I'm talking to Art.
Art doesn't have it.
I've asked you to talk to my lawyer.
And Brad doesn't have it. I have not avoided this request. I have asked all of the village employees who might have what you're looking for and they do not have it in the village files, in the village records.
Well, as I stated to you previously, that any record that's held by a contractor is subject to FOIA. So that as well, and I gave you that response. I gave you that from the, from the committee on Open Government. They said that this in fact is true, that they had cases and it's their recommendation. So Cabricky, it's a grow, I believe that's how you spell his last name, or his last name. They're all subject to this same FOIA request. So what I'm going to do tomorrow, if you don't want to come up with any reasonable accommodation for me, I'm going to send another FOIA request over that's going to include you, Mr. Mayor. It's going to include the clerk and it's going to include Cabricky and the engineer. And you're all going to be subject under the same FOIA request.
If, if Cabricky and the engineer is subject to FOIA, I don't believe that is true.
Look, I don't take much faith in your legal opinions over the years, Janet, to be honest.
I don't, you should, really.
Um, I've given you the documentation to say that that is, is in fact true. You can research it yourself. I sent it to Art. You have it, right? Did you send, you sent that over to Art, right? So it's public records and I'd like to take a look at them because I think that there's some indiscrimin, discrepancies in what has been done here, especially on these change orders. I think that there's money that was spent that shouldn't have been spent. I think there's a lot of punch list items. I think that there was things that were done that probably shouldn't have been done. And I would like to see it. Where, where's your, you're nearly $6 million over budget now, right? Over what? You got, you had $80 million with the funding. And last I heard, you're at 13 something and there's still another change order coming in, so. Where does that take us? It takes up, plus up around $14 million?
That's one way to look at it, but we changed, we did a lot of change orders because we had the ability to get work done before the World University Games and we took advantage of it and did do that. But I mean, when you say over budget, it isn't like we all.
Well, there's no transparency with that. That's what I'm looking for.
Every single one of our change orders was in a public meeting. Every single one of them was approved in a public meeting.
I see what you produced for the, for the changers in the public meetings. It's like there's much, much, much more that goes into a change order. This is what I do for a business, you know.
Kind of like what I saw, of course, you know the private sector, but I'll let you.
Private sector, no, I've done a lot of public work. I've done federal government work. I've done state government work. I've done airports. I've done bases, you name it. And the FOIA, the, the process is the same in a construction document. Exactly the same, no matter if it's private or public.
The change orders were approved by this board and I believe they all had to pass muster through EFC, who was funding us.
Like I said, I will defer to legal counsel, look into your, your requests and get an answer for you. But if you feel.
Well, you've, you've said that, you've said that for, for months now.
Yeah, well, I believe at this point, we comply with the letter of the law. You feel we have. I feel we have, but if you feel the need to foil myself and whoever else, you've got that right.
So you're willing to go to court over this?
I'm willing to defer to legal counsel.
When you say I'm litigious, I say, why, why don't you produce the documents? That's what I can understand.
I'm going to refer to legal counsel. Whatever we're legally required to give you, we'll give you. But so far, it's just complete, well, so far, I've gotten nothing. How long does it take to research this? Where, where's our next step?